Each minute here, we have about two minutes before the forum. Well, good evening. I'd like to start on time because I know that we have a lot of candidates and a lot of information. And so I would like to welcome you to the school board candidates forum funded by the Ocean County Education Association. One of our service projects is to provide the community with this forum so you can be informed when you go to the council's Twitter on election day. We are so glad that you took the time to come or listen online. It is online. Thank you to our wonderful. Um, we want to start off the day. We invited all candidates who are running for school board. Rob Hunt got back to us about unfortunately not being able to attend the presentation when he could not reschedule. Um, because of the large number of candidates we have, we had to structure it a little bit differently than here. The first question will be answered by all candidates, the same question. Um, those passing the microphone, they have the minute and a half to answer. Candidates, you can see the timer in the back so that you can kind of watch your time for questions. Um, next, we have some random, a big pool of random questions. And we will pull a question from the pile and the first candidate will answer. The next candidate, they have one minute from all of those as we do those three rounds of questions. I'll have a minute. Okay, I'll pull another question. The second candidate will answer. I'll pull another question. Those pe- those questions might come back around again for the next. So, uh, just forward. You can talk to that back here. Finally, there will be a one-minute final, um, what else, the last thing we should want to say as a candidate. So, I'll be thinking about. So, without further ado, because I know we've got a lot to get through, so those people go ahead and. So, the first question for all of you is, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be a school board.
Uh, my name is Travis Grove. Um, we moved to Torrington in 2008. My wife, Neil, got a job at La Grange. Has a multi-grade teacher. Um, but we've been here for 16 years. Both of our kids graduated from Southeast. Um, and now they're no longer living here, but um, I decided to run for school board because I want to see that the best things are done for our kids and our staff and the employees of Ocean County School District. Um, I think that we're going in a good direction and I think we need to continue what is going on. So, I know it's not short, but that's my reason. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dylan Hager. I, uh, so I grew up in Torrington. I went to college, University of Wyoming, and I lived in Douglas for a little while and then and we moved back here to Torrington. I have three, um, kids, two are in high school and one graduated last year off of Torrington. I'm currently on the school board right now and I decided to throw my hat in again for the two-year term. That would put me, or put my kids, youngest kid real close to being done. Um, so that was one reason. Another reason, I just like working, uh, you know, with the community and as a team here on the local school board. Um, just try to keep that community, um, just going and involved in our school district and, um, trying to help it out.
My name is Michael Harrison. Completely intimidating. There's like a school interview out there. But I'm running for school board because it's all about the kids. I have four kids in schools here in Ocean County. Um, my mom was a school teacher. We have school teachers in our family and I just want to help. At the end of the day, I'm running to want the best education for all of our kids, if not, including both public and private. Education is the most important thing that we can do today. And that's why I run. These kids need the best education possible and I believe it's here. We just need to understand sort of issues, come up with really good solutions, work a plan and just go work and be there for the kids. That's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Barkin. Um, my wife and I moved to Wyoming in 2018. Our kids, we rubbed their lips too. We moved to La Grange, worked on a ranch down there for about four years and, uh, the move to Torrington in, uh, 22. Um, my son graduated Southeast High School in 2023 and I currently have a daughter that's a sophomore down there still. Um, as my wife is also a special education parent down there. Um, and the main reason I'm running for school board is in a work service. I mean, we've all, we're all gifted in certain areas. I kind of have a knack for being able to talk to people and being able to understand both sides of, of different perspectives. Even, even when we may not agree, it's, I mean, it's important to be able to see both sides and understand where both sides are coming from as well. That's enough.
Hi, I'm Kelly Lee Borisram. Um, I grew up in Torrington, so I went to these public schools, um, from kindergarten through 12th grade and then, uh, graduated, went to the University of Wyoming where I met my husband Chris. Um, and then we moved back here. I am an English professor at Eastern Wyoming College. Um, and I've been working here for the past 13 years. Uh, my husband is the, uh, girl's basketball coach here at the high school and also a D E teacher at Lincoln. I have a daughter in fourth grade and a son that's, um, taking advantage of the TK program at Lincoln. Um, so the reason that I want to run, um, so I'm a lifelong learner. I love learning and I love imparting that knowledge too. And, uh, I kind of wanted to know a little bit more about how things in the public schools ran. Um, I felt like it was really important, um, with my family being a part of that. And, um, my kids are kind of at the age where they're becoming a little bit more independent and they have a little bit more time to devote to this. And I just really like the idea of getting involved, uh, especially just at the local level, right? That seems like enough. Um, so hopefully I can, uh, learn something and also help with something. And, um, so thank you.
I'm Joe Lainer and I graduated from Torrington High School. I didn't like speech since. I can't believe I'm doing this. But, uh, I started teaching at La Grange, had been Southeast and then I ended up at Trail Elementary. And I put 30 years of teaching in our school district. I was, uh, um, well, I, I subbed for nine years. I live at Huntley. And, uh, I just feel that I needed to be here for my kiddos. My kids range from seventh grade through 12th grade right now. I pay attention though, my former students, I know. In fact, I, I have quite a few parents right here tonight, you know? I'll just ask, how, how are my kids doing? But I just feel I retired for one year and I was told that you should stay away from the school for one year. So I didn't stop or anything and thought, okay, my year is up. What can I do now? And I like to support our school. Um, and so that's the main reason I'm here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you to the G C E A for putting this on. It's a lot to get this many people together all at one time. So I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Lena Buller. Um, I went to Southeast eight years twelve. I believe blue. Uh, my kids believe blue. Um, I had a daughter who graduated from Southeast last year. I've got a six for you right now. Um, you know, that question of why am I running for the school board, um, has rolled over in my head lots of times. We've had lots of serious discussions in my house, um, with my husband and my kids. This is not an easy board to be on. It's not. And it was a difficult decision, but I'll tell you the reason that I continue to put myself up here is consistency. I think that this county and this school district needs consistency. I really do. I think that we're making some, some good decisions and some positive changes and we need to continue to do so. Um, one thing I have learned being on the school board thus far is it takes forever to get anything to change in the school system. And if we make these big changes now, I am concerned about what that looks like for our kiddos. I want to continue to serve the parents and the teachers who spend every waking minute of their day with our kiddos. I trust them. They are our neighbors, our friends and our family. And I want to continue to discuss and address what is here right now and not the national narrative. Thank you.
My name is Diane Sabanjo. So that was more in here in Torrington. Um, I have six grandchildren in the school district, just starting out, so they have a long way to go. I raised my three children in the school district. I worked as a police officer in this community for 17 years. In seven of those years, I served on or as a school resource officer here in Ocean County, which I was very glad to be able to visit all of the schools, including La Grange out there and, uh, meet all of the students. I taught there, uh, at Southeast and here in Ocean, well, Torrington, of course, um, to all the grades and it was, it was just a great experience. During my time as a police officer, I was able to start a lot of community organizations, drop with cops, where I got to, um, see the realization of poverty and kids and how those kids really become who they were. My main reasons for wanting to be on the school board is because when I worked at Torrington High School and I worked in school, I worked with amazing administrators who taught me that every child deserves to be successful. And no matter who they are or where they come from. And I really, really do believe in that. And I appreciate everything I've learned from those administrators while they're here. And I'm ready to take on the challenge to make sure that our school district is the best district in the state.
Hi, I'm Heath Steinbach. I am a Wyoming native. I, but I moved to Torrington, to Ocean County, um, about 27 years ago. I have a son who graduated from Southeast in 2017 and a daughter who graduated from Torrington High School in, um, let's see, 22. And I have another daughter who is a senior right now. Um, I have a, a long background in education. I taught at the preschool level, um, and taught at the high school level. And for the previous, I guess, almost 15 years, I taught at the college. Um, I taught education, I taught pre-service teachers. So, um, I have a wealth of background in education. And I feel like, uh, it's important to be able to, to contribute and to serve when you can. And I think that now is a time when, um, I think like Lena said, uh, consistency is important and an understanding of curriculum and what's going on in, at the national level is important. But, but how do we make it apply at the state level and at the, at the community level? And I think that that's, that's really important to, to be able to do that. And, um, and I think that I have the, the skills and the background to, to do that. So that's why I decided to run.
Hello, my name is Mike Ty. Um, moved here in about 2016 with my wife and two children. We live near Yoda, Wyoming. Um, both of my children attend Southeast schools and that's my biggest motivation for running for a school board. Um, been looking for ways to serve my community and this opportunity popped up. So I see a lot of good things and a common discussion in our home that we tell our kids quite often is you guys don't know how good you have it. You know, I want to see that continue. You know, to see a lot of these additions to our curriculum, see how they play out and work as a team. So, but make adjustments if we need and just keep a good thing going. Thank you.
All right. So we'll start our random questions. Mrs. Sanjo, if they were to ask you, can I help? I have not committed to myself. So my name is Jennifer Rommel. I am the president of the Ocean County Education Association. I teach fourth grade at Trail Elementary. I have taught special ed, special degrees and fifth grade and fourth grade all the rest of these years. And this is my 30th year teaching. So that's why. Um, all right. So the first question, and it'll only be, uh, you're going to be answering this and then also another question. So, um, what about our school district? Would you like to change by the end of your term?
That, that's a tough question. Um, honestly, I think, you know, we hear so much about, about test boards and all that. Um, they've definitely come up and I'd like to see them come up more. But honestly, I, I think I'd like to see changes more of what is going on right now. Um, you know, I've had long discussions with, with Tenille about curriculum and what's going on. And I think, you know, the, the O G program that's been implemented is really good. The Eureka map has been really good and I really want to see that keep going and, you know, keep building and, you know, and stick with that, you know, because it is working.
Mr. Hager, in what area of our educational systems do you believe the Board of Trustees has the greatest impact?
I think, uh, over the last four years, um, sitting on the board, I think the biggest impact we have as a board is probably supporting the need of, um, the people in the trenches, either the students, the admin, the superintendent and, um, teachers. That's, you know, that's about, about our biggest goal and try to, again, work together as a team. Here, everybody's different perspective, but at the end of the day, we should pretty much come together, um, and decide what's best for the school district.
Are you familiar with the three initiatives focused on professional development in the Ocean County School District? It's, uh, M T S S, our multi-tiered systems of support, P L C, professional learning communities and leader in. Do you support continuing this work in the Ocean County school?
We do, okay.
Are you familiar with the three initiatives focused on, and P T S S, which is our multi-tiered systems of support, P L C, professional learning communities and leader in. Do you support continuing this work in the Ocean County school?
I do. Um, I think all these programs are great. I've seen with my kids, the leader in means, um, take advantage of that and, um, I'd love to be a leader in their classes and in the community, um, in sports. And so I think those programs are all great. Um, I'd definitely love to see them continue, um, and, and learn from them. And, you know, maybe pair up with other schools that are doing the same similar and see how they're working in programs. And see the benefits that they're having with those programs and if we can borrow different aspects from things from them as well. Uh, but I definitely want to see if those things continue.
Thanks.
From your perspective, what is the biggest educational issue that Ocean County school district?
Biggest thing that I've, I've gathered from talking to, um, some different people around the district, different teachers, administrators, is that they need to feel supported. Um, not necessarily from a, from an attaboy standpoint, but from the standpoint of, you know, these people are hired and put in place to make decisions and they need to be able to make those decisions and feel like that we have their back when they make these decisions. I mean, granted, if they're doing something that's way out of line, they need to reel back in. But if we're hiring these people and putting them in place to, to make these decisions, we need to support them, with the decisions at the time, right?
Right. Well, keep the thought within it. Um, all right. I'm just gonna have you, the first question that they answered, and I'll just continue with our question. But the first question that they answered was, please tell us about yourself and why you want to run.
I apologize for being late. My name is, oh, sorry. I apologize for being late. Um, my name is Valerie LaFchar. I've lived here in Torrington in 1970, in fourth grade. I graduated from my high school in 1979. I spent 34 years living in Torrington, often not. I've lived in Cheyenne and I've also lived in Rock Springs. And my husband and I retired and we moved back here in 19, excuse me, 2016. So I'm here to, I love children, I love students, I love learning and I'm here to give back to my community. So I would appreciate if you guys would give me some opportunity. So, thank you.
All right. We'll continue with this tweet and then I'll come back. I'll get to the last one later. All right. Um, what role do you see professional development playing in improving teacher performance as students operate?
Um, yeah, so professional development is so important because, um, if our educators don't have access to current and updated practices and information, then we can't keep up with, um, the rest of the state and also with the rest of the country. And so I think professional development is one of the most important, um, things that we can provide. And I think that, uh, making sure that that, uh, is easy for our educators to access is also really important. Making sure that it's a priority in the buildings with the administrators, making sure that, that, um, educators have time to fit that into their schedule so that our kids can get the most up-to-date information that they possibly can. So I think it's very, very important.
Ms. Hager, what will you do to ensure that the board operates efficiently and effectively avoiding loss and Ms. McHager, what will you do to ensure that the board operates efficiently and effectively avoiding gridlock and [inaudible?]
Well, number one, we have to work together. We got to figure it out, what is it that's best for our students? We don't need it for what's best for me. What is best for our students? How can we work together for our, get the teachers to work together, the administration to work together? But for us to get something done, we got to figure out, well, what was the gridlock? Maybe we can have leaders and teachers, you know, we can all learn. Okay, was it me that caused the problem? Or was it someone else? And how can we talk through it? Usually in a gridlock, someone just shuts down. It's their way or the highway. Right, we have a problem. So we've got to go and just work together and say, okay, what are some options? What can you work with? And let's go from there and see what we can, how we can solve it. Again, we've got to make sure we're keeping our kids educated. Move them on, give them chalk someday, I hope.
All right, and Mrs. Mallard, what do you feel is the primary function of a school board member?
Good question. Uh, it's been a lot of hard knocks life or learning for me in the school board. First, when I came on, I thought we're going to just save the world and how hard can this be, right? But what I have learned being on this board is it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of dedication and a lot of conversations. I think Mr. Kramer probably gets tired of his phone ringing every week, at least once a week from me. But I think that that's critical. I think that as a board member, it is our job to have those conversations. It's our job to dig into the details. It's not our job to sit there and be soon-fed information and be a yes man. I strongly believe that it's important to talk to the individuals that are on the front lines, that are having to, you know, put into place whatever it is that we are passing or the policies that we are asking them to live by. But I think that as a board member, it's our job to be educated before we make decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Dantos, what differentiates you from the other candidates?
I'd like what differentiates the big word. What separates me from everybody else is the fact that I really don't have a dog on the spot. So my best, and I think everybody here has the best interest of students and teachers in the district. I get to come in on a clean slate. My grandkids are barely coming into school. My kids have graduated and gone. And I think the amazing thing is, is I'm coming in with open mindness and the ability to be very transparent with everybody that comes to me and to listen. And one of my big things that I believe is the most important is communication and being honest and open with people and having a good credibility in yourself and showing that to your community. If you lose your credibility, then you lose everything. And I promise that if I'm elected to this board, that I will always be honest. I will always be forthcoming and I will always be transparent.
Ms. McHager, how will you ensure, I kind of led us into this on accident. How will you ensure transparency and open communication?
I think that it's important to, number one, listen. And that includes listening to your constituents, the students, the parents, but also staff of the board, the members of the board, and being willing to change your mind when it's necessary. Being transparent is about, isn't just about telling the truth. It's about, it's about telling everything that's going on and being open to saying that you were wrong about something and changing your mind. And so I think if we work as a team on a board and you can accomplish that.
Now, our final question for this round?
Yeah.
Oh, we have one, we have, um, Valerie, so we'll get back to that. Um, how do you mentor teachers and ensure they have the resources they need?
I think the biggest thing as a board member would be to make sure they have all the tools that they need. If we're asking them to meet or to meet some of the goals we set as a district, we need to listen to what they're saying they need. They're the ones that are on lines, even with our children. So we can't expect to meet these goals if we haven't done our part to make sure they have absolutely everything they need and our support.
Okay, Valerie. What are your top concerns and focus areas? We can talk.
My top concerns and focus areas. My biggest concern right now is leadership. I believe we don't have the leadership we need on the school board. And without leadership, we are not setting the tone for the rest of the school district. We, um, we don't, I don't believe we have the teamwork we need. And I do believe that's a very strong part. We also need to take ownership of our scores that we're getting on some of our tests, which are ACTs and some of our state tests. Because if the board doesn't take ownership of those and take and accept the responsibility and accountability for what's coming out there, then nobody else is going to. If we don't do it, there's nobody else going to. We also have to provide the tools that the staff needs so that they can then do what their jobs are, as well as for the superintendent. So I really think that what we are lacking right now is the leadership skill portion.
Just keep it on that edge, yeah. You can shut it off. We will start into round two of our questions. Mr. Rose, kind of a long, boring question, but Torrenton and Goshen County have a history of diversity rooted in agriculture and a wide range of socioeconomic economics. As a potential school board member, how would you support and meet the needs of these diverse populations within our community? Yeah. Torrenton and Goshen County have a history of diversity rooted in agriculture and a wide range of socioeconomic backgrounds. As a potential county school board member, how would you support and meet the needs of these diverse populations within our community?
The tough one. So I think with seeing the differences within, like from Southeast and Lagrange and Torrenton, obviously there's, like you said, there's a difference in the socioeconomic. And I think each school has to adapt to what their students are and what their learning capabilities are. You know, not everybody's going to learn the same way. Not everybody's going to be able to do the same thing. So you have to adapt as to what you're doing with each school and each area.
All right, Ms. Hager, you are one voice, but the board makes decisions. Can you speak to your ability to build consensus in your opinion in the minority?
You know, I have been on the board for four years. That does come up quite often. And I sometimes like to refer to, just what's comfortable for me. But I use some different, different persons. So I've used football for this one. And it's kind of like, you know, everybody on a football team is trying to grow the same direction towards winning zone and score. And not all the time all players don't like to play that school. Just because they don't like to play, it's their duty as a team member to still put their best effort forward and help support the other team and move towards the [inaudible].
All right. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a superintendent and administrator?
I think that the role as a school board member is to support the administrators and the superintendent. It collaborates and works together. And if we're not working together, then obviously we're to the contrary. So I think that's how it differentiates. The main role is that the school board helps support. We help make decisions and at the end of the day, we're there for the kids.
As a school board member, support Goshen County students in becoming productive in the twenty-first century?
As a school board member, I would definitely be looking at the curriculum to help students to move forward into the twenty-first century. We need to provide them with the life skills as well as the academic abilities to meet their future needs. Some of them are going to college, some of them are not. But we need to make sure that they're receiving the credit hours they need to move forward and the type of classes that they need to move forward so that they can meet the goals that they're setting for themselves. And we need to make sure to try and provide those for them. So I would say that we just, we need to support our students. We need to work with them. We need to see what their needs are and move them forward as best as we can with the services and resources that we have in place. And if we have to add services, then we need to look at that. There's a lot of ways to collaborate with our businesses in town to get them some exposure to the types of work that they're looking at.
All right. This is kind of a lengthy question and it's kind of a two-part question. Okay, sorry. As a school board member, how would you support the inclusion of special education students in Goshen County School District, ensuring that all students receive the appropriate support and resources they need to succeed?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah. As a school board member, how would you support the inclusion of special education students in Goshen County School District, ensuring that all students receive the appropriate support and resources they need to succeed?
I don't know that there's a silver bullet for that. I think one of the biggest things is be able to communicate with the special education teachers, the special education departments. Because they know their students better than any of the rest of us do. And I think they need to be included in a lot of things. I know that at Southeast, that teacher down there came in and worked with some of the special ed department the other day. And just, I mean, little things like that make a big difference to school kids. So it's important to include them. It's important that they have an opportunity to interact with other students and as well.
All right. How will you educate yourself if there is a topic in terms of the board of what you have learned enough?
So I am assuming that there will be some trainings involved in being on the board. And so hopefully that will help get people up to speed. I think in the whole, you know, once we're involved in it, if there's a topic that comes up, I am more than willing to, I mean, do research and read up on those topics. And really, I think that I need to be knowledgeable about the local needs, the state needs, and also the national needs. But as I said before, I'm a lifelong learner and that is part of the reason that I'm wanting to be on the board. And so I just don't see any issues with being open to learning anything that I need to for, to serve the school district.
Ms. McHager, what is one overall educational priority that you would accomplish during your time in office and why?
I'd like to see my kids being ready to go out into the workforce. This is what I noticed. Torrenton High School, we had four principals in the last four years. That doesn't seem like very consistent to me. So we got to figure out what's going on there. At one time at Huntley, and cosentology was started at Huntley. And not all kids want to go to college, but they want to go to the workforce. So in two years, they started as a sophomore or a junior. And then by the time they graduated as a senior, they just had to go in the summer and they had to agree to be a cosentologist so they could go to the workforce. Many who went to a trade school did end up going to college later because they wanted to do administrative type stuff. So to me, I want to look at, what are some other options? Not all kids want to go to college and we need plumbers and we need electricians and stuff. So we need to look at, what are the other options? Do we have a UWC right close here? Let's use it. So that's what I want.
What attributes and behaviors are essential for school board members?
These are good questions. Um, I think, I'm just going to go off of observation. I think that some of the best attributes for board members is the ability to listen, the ability to understand, the ability to see a different perspective. There are lots of times where we are faced with things that we just don't agree with, on a personal note. But it doesn't mean that it's not best for the district as a whole. I think that a good board member needs to be able to put their own personal interests aside. This is not a political board. It is nonpartisan. And it is so important that we look at the district as a whole. We are faced as a school board with a lot of difficult decisions that could help one child but may negatively impact the rest of the school district. It's really easy to sit here and say, oh, yeah, I could make that decision, no problem. But I think it's really important that good school board members be willing to put their personal views aside and do what's best for the district.
All right. Ms. Randos, how will you work to retain high-quality teachers and address the issue of teacher burnout and morale?
I think one of the most important things a person can do on a school board or in your life is build positive relationships. And I feel like a lot of times you get on a board or you're a member of a certain group and you just stick in that little group. There are a lot of professional teachers out there that want to be heard, that want to have their voice listened to. And I feel like when you build healthy relationships with teachers, you learn from not just one teacher, but you learn from all the teachers what the needs are. And that's something that you just can't sit on a school board and be like, oh, I'm on the school board, I'm making these decisions. But not have healthy relationships with your community members and your teachers to know what the needs are of that community. So I feel like that's one of the most important things that I would do is to make sure that I build relationships with teachers to know what their needs and wants are and what they need to be successful as a teacher and keep them around a little bit longer.
All right. What is your background? What's in your background do you choose to believe you would be an effective school board member?
Well, I, like I said before, I've been in education my entire life, my entire professional life. And I think that not only my education, not only my background in education makes me relevant as a school board member, but I think that I care about my kids and all of the kids in the county. And I think that's probably one of the biggest things is that you have to really care about the success of all of the kids. And if you, if you can create an environment where all of the kids can be successful in one way or another, whether it be through CTE or academics, I think that that makes a great district and that's how you can be most successful.
All right. What unique qualities do you bring to this role?
I don't know if I bring anything unique. I know that I'm not an educator and I've, I don't know. I wouldn't know the first thing about teaching students, but as a mechanic, I know that you don't fix things that aren't broke. And a lot of times that doesn't also mean you're leaving completely alone either. I have the ability to see some of these things through and take the time and look at our through and take the time and look at our test scores and see what's working, and see some of the things that might need fixed and some of the things that might just need adjusted. I think a lot of these things that we have started, and a lot of the processes in the new curriculum, or some of the newer curriculum, they're going to take some time, and we're going to have to see these scores, to see how well they're working, and if each and every student is benefiting from them.
Thank you. All right. Round three. All right, round three. How would you, as a board member, strive to strengthen the relationships between the school, family, and the community?
Number one, communication. I mean, that's critical to anything we do in life. You have to communicate, you know, backing the teachers up, backing the administrators up, listening to what they have to say, what the kids have to say, and what the parents have to say. I mean, we need to communicate, we need to listen. I think sometimes it's, you know, it's too much of what I want to do and how I want to do it, and not listening to what is going to work best for everyone else.
All right. So we're back to some of the others you probably mentioned with these questions. How will you, as a board member, support Goshen County students in becoming 20, productive 21st century students?
I don't know. Yes. I mean, I've been paying attention, but over the last, oh, probably a couple of years, on our school board, we've been working on drafting a new mission and vision statement. And one of the big key components in that that I was super passionate about was just allowing the kids to kind of have a working relationship, kind of in their own pathway, like, you know, what they want to do when they grow up. And just having them think about it at an earlier age, instead of being told, you know, go taking, let's go take whatever, and just give them the opportunity to help decide some of their own teacher.
All right. How would you make this with our teachers and ensure they have the resources they need?
You have to ask them what they need. You have to listen. That's hard, because sometimes we already think we know what the answers are, but we don't always listen to what they're telling. That gave us two ears, and now we're supposed to listen twice as much, right? So in the spirit of making, ask them what they need, ask them what resources would be best for them, and then work on getting them those resources. My mom is a school teacher, spent out all the time. She wished she had X, Y, and Z. Nobody listened. So she thought her own stuff, so she would have X, Y, and Z. So I think if we want our teachers to be successful, and to be productive, and to do everything that we ask them to do, we have to give them the resources, and listen to them when they tell us what they need, and then work our best to give them those resources.
All right. All right. How would you ensure transparency and open communication?
For me, open communication is just, it's a respectful thing. We need to listen to the others when they're talking. We don't need to be thinking about our response. We need to be tactically listening. So many people, when they have their own agenda, and so when somebody else is talking, all they're thinking about is how they're going to defend themselves, how they're going to counter that. And that is not respectful, and that is not an open communication situation. We need to listen, we need to act, we need to be open-minded, and we need to be respectful of the people that we are listening to and we are talking to. Transparency for me is being honest and open. If, if I mess up, I'm as a, own it. You know, let's just do it. Because we all make mistakes. We all make decisions that may or may not be what everybody else wants. But when we do things, we need to own what we're doing. We need to take the accountability and the responsibility for what we do.
All right. So Larkin, what do you feel is the primary function of a school board member?
I think the primary function of a school board member is to work with the other school board members, obviously, and to support and hold accountable the superintendent, also work with them. I think it's, it's important to be able to have those relationships with the, with the schools, to be able to support them, so you know what they need, and as well as, you know, drafting policies and various different, less exciting things, but.
What in your background made you believe you would be an effective school board member?
So I've been dying to talk about this all night. So I, I'm a, I said I'm a college English professor, and so I see the students who graduate from our school district and then come up to Torrington to take classes. And I also have high school students in my classes right now, in my online classes. And I also get to see students from all over the state and all over the country. And so I think that from that perspective, and also thinking about the trends over time, that I am uniquely positioned to kind of talk about what I'm seeing with students, what I've seen in the past, how things have changed. Like we're seeing how COVID affected certain levels, you know, when they were, you know, in middle school or high school during the time that they were at home. And so I'm hoping that that can be an asset on the board, is just having that different perspective from a different level of education.
Ms. Joe, this is a long, this is one of those long ones, and I'm sorry. Are you familiar with the three initiatives focused on professional development for the Goshen County School District, and TFF multi-tier systems to support TLC professional learning community and leader in the team? Do you support continuing this work in the Goshen County School?
I seem to be familiar with some of that. Some of that has changed in the one year out. But yeah, some works really good. It's like, fine, fine, as long as it's not not adding more work for the teacher who's still trying to teach kids. You know, you only have so many hours from the, from morning to evening, you know, to the end of the day. You've got to get your basics in. But some of these things are very helpful. They kind of teach the kids, you know, how to respect each other, how to work together with each other. So, and of course, behavior seems to be one of our biggest problems. So if it's helpful, I'm supporting it. But if it seems like it's kind of, well, just something added on, another piece put on that the teacher doesn't have enough time to get through anyway, then I probably wouldn't support that. But only if it's helpful for my kiddos. Oops, I don't have kiddos now, do I?
All right. What would you do to ensure that the board operates efficiently and effectively, avoiding gridlock and partisan?
I can speak to what we have been doing. There's a lot of discussions, and we've got to be respectful and just understand where everybody's coming from. I don't know that we've had any moments of gridlock with boards since I've sat on, but I do feel like open communication that can be respectful. I do not think that a board member is effective that sits back and says nothing, or doesn't share his or her perspective or opinions, because that's why we're there. There's nine of us to provide a wide variety of different perspectives and opinions. But I think in order for us to be efficient and effective, we've got to talk to each other, and we do learn to work with each other. And there are some hard conversations that take place. But if you're going to sit as a board member and say nothing, then I ask why you're on the board.
All right, Diane. What unique qualities do you bring to this role?
I think my training and experience in education bring a plethora of experience that I could add to the district. I guess I was a crisis negotiator by the FBI, so that might help me in my life. But I, I do feel like, you know, when I, when I took on the role in my, continuing my education, I focused on prevention, education. I focused on classrooms and education, on diversity in education. So I kind of knew the totality of what we could do as a community to better serve the kids that have these. I had a child that was in special ed, and so I feel like having that knowledge and being able to listen to a lot of other people that have had some of the same challenges, and the teachers, the special ed teachers that have had challenges, bring just a special first man.
All right. Okay, this is a long one. This is a long one. Get ready. Torrington and Goshen County have a history of diversity rooted in agriculture and a wide range of socioeconomic backgrounds. As a potential school board member, how would you support the needs of these diverse populations?
I think I always come back to that we need to listen, we need to pay attention to what the teachers are, are telling us and how to best support all different groups of students, whether it may be diversity in terms of rates or socioeconomic status, whatever that may be, how can we best serve all of the students. And I think we just need to listen, we need to pay attention to what students and staff have to say. You know, I really feel like teachers are the experts. They're with the students eight hours a day, seven hours a day. They get to know them and their families. I do think that if we could figure out ways to get families involved, parents involved in, in the school a little bit more, that would be helpful. And I think that would also support us supporting the difference of diversity.
Mike, how would you educate yourself if there is a topic in front of the board of which you have limited knowledge?
I think it just comes down to taking the time to, to find out everything you can about the subject, how the community feels about it, how the parents feel about it, and breaking it down to how exactly it will benefit our students. I think putting the students' needs above a lot of our adult needs would, would help at least sway your, your actions on some of these tough subjects. And I think the biggest thing is finding out from the people that deal with our children every day, they're the ones that, I mean, half the time, these teachers spend more time with our children on a given day than we do. So if, if it's a subject that they have some input on, we need to listen to them and learn everything you can about it.
All right. We have gone through our three rounds, and so you're going to have one last opportunity, so one minute, to say your last thoughts or anything about your whole year.
First of all, I'd like to thank you to TPA for putting this on. Very tough questions. I don't think I've ever spoken in front of this many people, and I'm just nervous. I just want to say that, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen to what needs to be done to make our school better, to make our children better, to make our teachers better, to make our staff better. And also, you know, when I decided to do this, I said that there was going to be no agenda, and I was not going to bring any kind of politics into this. And I'm going to hold to that. I mean, it's, it's all about the kids, and it's all about Goshen County Schools being the best. I would like to thank all the candidates that decided to actually show up. And then lastly, something came out today in the news that Wyoming's ACT scores were the highest among all states that require students to take the ACT test. So all the teachers and staff out there, congratulations.
So again, first, I guess I'd like just to thank, you know, you guys as a community for spending the time here and listening to those candidates. I think it's super important. You know, that the community does have a, they're, they're best educated. No, I'm counting candidates up here, because we, you know, we, we can't change a whole lot, but we do, we do have some impact on your students and the community. So thank you guys for, for coming to be here. I, I guess the biggest thing for me is, you know, I don't think anybody should bring their personal agenda up here to this board, and 100% all politics should be here, just about serving our community and our students. Thank you.
All the students in this school district, I'm one of them, you all are one of them. We raise our kids and hopefully send them off to school, that they're going to be taken parents. And I think for all parts they are. I think it changed six times, and I have to thank the teachers and the staff and faculty of all of them, because they're doing the best that they know how to do, and the best that they have the resources to do. My mom and teacher, and my wife working for the school district, and lots of friends that, you know, work in Goshen County, with the school district, teacher, do her job. And I applaud you guys, because at the end of the day, it's a normal calling to be a teacher, to be a parent, to be a faculty member in any of the school tier. And I think there's lots of work that we can do, and we can do it together. I just want you for that, and to help when I can. Thanks.
Yes, I'd like to thank you, everyone, for, for showing up. And I am the one that was showed up late. I do apologize for that, but I won't owe my mistakes. I believe that I bring to this organization a sense of leadership. I have a background in leadership, and I have the opportunity to serve you, serve this community. I love children, and I believe that learning in school is just the beginning of our lives. We will continue to learn through the rest of our lives. We are setting the basis for our students right here in the school system. We need to teach them to love to learn, because the rest of their life depends on their ability to continue to learn. So I would ask that you would give me some consideration, and there's many good people up here on this board, so I know it's a tough, a tough choice. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak tonight, for putting this on so that, so that you all have the opportunity to come and, and educate yourselves before you vote. I think it's extremely important to be educated before we vote. It's a big, big decision on, on who's going to be making policies and, and supporting the district for the next few years. So it's not something we need to take lightly. As far as what I would bring, I think I'm a pretty well-rounded person. Most people that know me would tell you that I'm, I'm pretty level-headed. And if you've got something to say, I'm more than willing to listen. At the end of the day, we, we may agree, we may disagree, but we're going to leave knowing that that's okay either way. It's important to be able to hear both sides of the story and be able to, to understand that.
So I think when you run for something like this, you want to believe that you are one of the best choices. And I do think that I can do a good job on this board, but I also want to acknowledge that after tonight, I have a really good idea that we do have a lot of good candidates, and that this is going to be a tough decision. I think one thing that was clear is that everyone has the best interest of our students in mind. Um, I think one thing that was clear is that everyone has the best interest of our students in mind. Um, I also wanted to emphasize that uh, we have a lot of really effective, good hearing teachers and staff in the district. Um, I know that one of the challenges that the district faces sometimes is keeping people, but that's kind of a hallmark of rural education. We have the same issue at the college sometimes. Um, so I think it's really important when we get people um, who uh, are effective at their jobs, that we make it a place that they want to stay. Um, and I hope that I can help uh, with some of the things that might contribute to um, to keeping people around.
Well, I've been in the trenches and I've been in three elementary, so I know a lot about La Grange, Southeast and Little Torrington. So I have had experience and that's, it's been wonderful experiences. And in my case, I didn't actually have any children, but I did have these kids for nine months, supposed to like I have them. And of course, I like to pay attention when I graduation to see if all my kids are graduating. So you'll see me at the graduation. I'll have your little picture, because that's what's cool about fifth grade. You have the class picture and I'm just going to check off, okay, these kids are graduating. All right. Sometimes they sneak out and they go over to Lingel or Southeast and graduate. I don't care. I like to see that they graduated. And so I really want to promote that we get our kids graduated, we're, they want to show up to work. What I find is our kids aren't to, you know, to show for their clap. They're not showing up to there. They've got to get in that plan that when they work for us, they're going to have to show up for work. So with all my experiences, I think I can do it. I, I am a social butterfly. So if you don't know me yet, you will soon.
All right, if you know me, a minute is not enough time, so I will try not to talk fast. Um, first and foremost, let's talk about those scores. I am proud of this school district. I'm proud of each and every one of the educators in this room and all of those that serve this district. These scores that were released show that what you're doing in literacy and math is working. It's working and we have got to be consistent in keeping up that work for it to continue to work. Now, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. There isn't everything in life, but what we are doing now is working. We've got to remain consistent for it to continue to work. I have to remind myself that this is a forum and not a debate, uh, because I'll, I'll be honest. School board meetings feels like we are under attack a lot. Don't allow that narrative to come into this school district. Don't allow it to come into our community and our school. Continue to listen to the teachers, listen to those that are on the trenches or in the trenches. Trust those that are your neighbors and your family and your friends that you are sending your kids with the majority of their day, every single day. Thank you.
So about those test scores, what I heard supplied to the young school district is I read an article published um, regarding the top schools in Wyoming. And I was really excited to start reading that because I really expected Torrington to be on that or Southeast or Lingel. But unfortunately, we weren't. Burns was, who um, I was surprised. It was like Burns beat all of us, you know? And there were a lot of other schools on there that just blew my mind that we were not on that list. And I want to see us on that list. And that's one of my goals is to get us there. The other thing is, is that I heard somebody talk about the behavioral problems, which has always been an issue in, in school since I worked there. I was an SRO, so I know a lot about those. And I want to be able to help and assist in um, making programs and listening to those teachers and being able to help those kids that do have behavioral problems. That way all kids are learning and there's not disruption of the class. If we take care of those things, then the other needs are going to follow.
I also want to thank T C A and all of you for, for organizing this and, and showing up to listen. Um, I want to also thank the other candidates. Uh, this isn't easy. This is intimidating, um, but it's important. And I think that, you know, we have a lot of really good things that are happening in this district. Um, test scores are one of them and they are improving. Uh, and, and I think that it's important that we support those things, that we support our teachers and our staff. Um, just like with everything, I mean, there's room for improvement. Um, you know, I don't know what that specifically is because I don't have an agenda in terms of what I want to change. I just want to continue to do, to support the things that we're doing well and look for ways to improve in areas where we can improve. Um, so uh, thank you again for, for doing this and I appreciate all of you attending.
So I'd like to thank, um, thank you guys for putting this forum on. It sure was nice to know that uh, we were all invited to this one. I definitely want to see uh, see our teachers and students supported and there's so many good things going on in our district. And like everyone said, the, the scores are coming up and not just coming up, but they're meeting and exceeding some standards and some goals. And it sounds like everybody's goal is to keep moving beyond those high standards and just keep going up and up. So I'd like to see us play the long game as a board and see some of these things through. Uh, keep the politics out of our board and off of our agendas and uh, do everything for the benefit of our students and our students alone.
I would like to thank, from the bottom of my heart, all of you for attending tonight. Um, it's just a guide by less. Thank you all for attending and everybody online who's listening. Um, we do provide a special community service that you can be informed voters. And it's one of our favorite things that we do because we are obviously so passionate about our students and about education. So we cannot thank you enough for agreeing to attend tonight. And it cannot be easy to answer questions on the fly and um, just fill your heart out to these community members. So I thank you so much. Um, this concludes our forum tonight, so voting is just a short time away. So good luck.